February 8th to order. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, Superintendent, as a memorial.
Thank you. If you could, please keep in your thoughts and prayers Michael Hurley and his family. Michael Hurley, or Mr. Hurley was a social studies teacher at North Quincy High School for over thirty-five years. For the last decade of his career, he served as department chair for Social Studies at North Quincy High School and director of summer and winter school programs. If you could keep Mr. Hurley and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Superintendent, roll call, please.
Mr. Bragoli.
Present.
Mrs. Cahill.
Present.
Mr. Gattro.
Present.
Mrs. Hubley.
Present.
Mrs. Lebo.
Present.
Mrs. Santoro.
Present.
And Mayakoke.
Present.
At this time, I'd like to read pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. I take a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January twenty-fifth on a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mr. Bragoli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion for executive session minutes of January twenty-fifth. Motion of Mr. Bragoli, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Open forum. This is an opportunity for community input regarding Quincy Public Schools community, and by that we mean a resident of the city, a parent of a child who attends Quincy Public Schools, an employee of QPS. Non-community people are permitted to send written statements but are not permitted to speak during the open forum. After giving your name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes, and an individual may not yield to others. Is there anybody here for open forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Item A, Superintendent, middle and high school STEM fairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. My superintendent's report begins with the middle school and high school STEM fair. The schedule was shared with school committee at your places. Quincy High School STEM fair was held last night with ninety-eight projects and seventy-eight volunteer judges. Thank you to Science Department Chair Julie Krieger and the science, mathematics, technology, and engineering staff members for mentoring the students and everyone from the Quincy High School community who supported the event, including members of the school committee who were present at the event. Thank you very much. North Quincy High School STEM fair is tomorrow, February ninth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty p.m. There are still opportunities to volunteer for judging. If you're interested in judging, please contact Science Department Chair Claire Boudreau at claireboudreau@quincypublicschools.com. We will recognize the top STEM fair projects from both high schools at a school committee meeting in March, so I'm looking forward to that. The middle school STEM fairs will be held in March, and calendar limitations will be sent out to the school committee to attend if your schedule permit. Next is the Southwest Middle Schools One Book, One School Initiative. The book is Out of My Mind by Sharon Draper. It's being read by all students and staff at Southwest Middle School with age-appropriate classroom discussions, projects, and enrichment focused on the book at each grade level. A culminating event for the whole school will be celebrated. The One Book, One School completion will be held in March. Obviously, the school committee received copies of the book in their packet, and if you're interested in reading along, please feel free to do so. So it's a very nice book. And lastly, the QPS Parent Academy schedule was shared with school committee, and their packet updated with dates for a number of upcoming events. Tuesday's Parent Academy for the new ELA Reading Program, Amplify Core Knowledge Language Arts, or CKLA, was attended by ninety parents and guardians of students in kindergarten through grade five, so that is actually a very good participation rate. And thank you to all of the SLT and principals who helped put that event together for our students and families. With that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Any questions, comments? Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, I just had a comment. I think that this is incredible, these parent academies. I was going to ask you how the attendance was, but I'm so glad you told us that, but I'd love to see a report at the end of the year.
Sure.
Just about how many people actually do this, because these offerings are really, really incredible. They really are.
Yeah.
I'm very appreciative that it's happening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to whole business. Item A, revision of Policy Section 4.3, Grants Proposals and Special Projects. This is up for a vote. Mr. Bragoli.
Thank you, Mrs. Santoro. This was approved by subcommittee and was sat on the table on January twenty-fifth meeting and is eligible for a vote tonight. We have a motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion, Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. Any discussion, comments? Superintendent?
Mr. Bragoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item B, revision to Policy Section 11.7, Public Gifts to the Quincy Public Schools. This is up for a vote. Mr. Bragoli.
Again, this was, the subcommittee came out and sat on the January twenty-fifth committee meeting, and it's eligible for a vote this evening. Any questions? Any discussion?
Motion.
On a motion of Mrs. Lebo, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. Superintendent, please call a rule.
Mr. Bragoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item C, the 2023-24 School Committee Meeting Calendar. Again, up for a vote, Mr. Bragoli.
Again, this went through subcommittee and came out sappy for us, and it's eligible for a vote this evening.
Motion to approve.
On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve. Superintendent, please call a rule.
Mr. Bragoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you.
New business, item five, Quincy Public Schools Bullying Prevention Plan. Assistant Superintendent Perkins, Ms. Papil, Mr. Ahern, Mr. Gilbert, and Ms. Mitchell to present. Who starts us off?
I'll start us off.
Right.
Well, thank you so much for having us here tonight to share our updated bullying intervention and prevention plan. We are gonna, we're gonna go through the regulations and the requirements of the bullying law. We're gonna share with you a little bit about our policies and procedures. You have been given, I believe, an updated copy of the Bullying Intervention and Prevention Plan, and we definitely look forward to your feedback before that becomes a final document for the district. And we are also gonna talk, because none of this would happen if it were not for the work of our schools. And so, you know, there's regulations, there's policy, there's procedures, and then there's what really happens day-to-day in the schools and what it looks like, you know, in actual practice. And so, we are really fortunate tonight to have with us Dan Gilbert, who is the principal of North Quincy High School, Courtney Mitchell, the principal of Southwest Middle School, and Nicholas Ahern, the principal of Clifford Marshall Elementary School, so that you can hear a little bit about what happens in the day-to-day life at each of our levels in Quincy Public Schools. I am also very thankful to have here with me the Director of Student Support, Mara Papil, and I just want to thank her because this process to update this plan has taken hours upon hours upon hours upon hours. We have looked at plans from other districts. We've analyzed with a fine-tooth comb the model plan from the Department of Education. Mara has done a ton of work with Kelly Powers on updating the website, and we're really excited to share that with you today. And so I do just want to thank her because she has put in a ton of hours on making this process and these procedures accessible for families and presented in a way where families can access the resources. So as I mentioned, tonight, we're gonna go through some of the, these components are all in the Bullying Intervention and Prevention Plan, but we've broken them down for you, you know, into different areas. So we're gonna talk just a little bit about the definitions. Those are taken right from the regulations. The prohibition against bullying, which is a part of the regulation, and it affects all of our schools. The difference between bullying versus conflict, policies and procedures, we're gonna spend quite a bit of time on that and go through how we handle bullying, how we handle a bullying investigation, how we communicate that with parents, what happens when we do need to involve the discipline process, and what that looks like in instances of bullying. Students in protected categories and how that plays a role in the law. Students with disabilities. There are new reporting requirements that we're gonna share with you this evening, and we do have the principals here to share how they handle bullying within each of their levels and share how they provide resources to their students and staff. We do, and we do have for you what the Bullying Intervention and Prevention Plan is looking like right now and also what it looks like on the Quincy Public Schools website. So just to share with you the definition from the regulations about bullying, I'm not gonna read to you the whole definition, but it is available in your packet for you to look at on the PowerPoint. So bullying is the repeated use by one or more students or by a member of the school staff of a written, verbal, or electronic expression, or a physical act or gesture, or any combination thereof directed at a victim. And some of the important things to remember is that when bullying occurs, it causes physical or emotional harm to the victim or potentially could damage the victim's property. It also places the victim in reasonable fear of harm. It can sometimes create a hostile environment at school. It can infringe on the rights of the victim at school. And something that, you know, we talk about a lot with our principals and in our meetings is that it can materially and substantially disrupt the education process and the orderly operation of the school. So I also wanted to share with you another important definition, which is cyberbullying, which, as you know, that we're seeing obviously more and more instances of where social media comes into play in students' behavior and what trickles over into the school setting. And so cyberbullying is bullying through the use of technology or any electronic communication. Cyberbullying, it could be when someone creates something like a webpage or a blog and assumes someone else's identity of another person, knowingly impersonates another person. It could also be the distribution by electronic means of a communication to more than one person, or the posting of material on an electronic medium that meets any of those definitions that I just previously mentioned, and in particular, causing a disruption to the school day. So just a couple more definitions that are present within the regulations. The first is a perpetrator, and this is a student or a member of the school staff who engages in bullying or retaliation. A hostile environment is a situation in which the bully, or the bullying causes the school environment to be permeated with intimidation, ridicule, or insult, that it can be severe or pervasive, enough so that it alters the condition of the student's education. And retaliation is retaliation against a person who reports bullying, provides information during an investigation of bullying, witnesses bullying, or has information about bullying. So I mentioned earlier the idea of a prohibition against bullying. This is actually part of the regulation, and basically what it means is that bullying is prohibited on any and all school grounds. But it also does, and we get asked this actually quite frequently in terms of when things happen outside of school, sometimes why does that then impact school and why do we have to address it within the school day? And so bullying is prohibited, as I said, on school grounds. It's prohibited on any property that's adjacent to or immediately connected to the school grounds. At school-sponsored events, so this could include things like games, plays, concerts, and it does not matter if it's on or off school grounds. If it is a school-sponsored event and bullying occurs, we have to address it. And it is considered prohibited at a bus stop or on a school bus, or any vehicle that is owned by the school, through the use of technology owned or leased by the school. And then really, this is the one that kind of covers all of those other things. It's at any location, activity, function, or program that is not school-related, or through the use of technology or an electronic device that is not owned, leased, or used by a school district or school, if the bullying creates a hostile environment at school for the target. If it infringes on their rights at school or materially and substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of school, then it does become a school matter, and it is something that we need to address. So just to speak a little bit about bullying versus conflict, so we, especially at the elementary levels, we talk a lot about this with the students, and you'll hear Mr. Ahern talk a little bit about it and the other principals as well. And this is something that principals have to struggle with. They have to tease out, is the incident that we're talking about an incident of bullying or is it a conflict between two students? And so it is not the same thing as a quarrel or a fight. It is a repeated pattern of behavior, and it usually involves an imbalance of power between the parties. So that could be something like a student that is bigger than the other student. It could be multiple students that have kind of ganged up on this one student. It could have to do with popularity. So there's a lot of things that can play into that. It could be age. And mediation is a tool that, you know, we sometimes use, and it can sometimes be used in a bullying situation, but it is a little bit tricky because it can often reinforce the bully's power when you make the two students sit down with one another. If there's already that imbalance of power, it does, you know, it can make the victim feel really uncomfortable. So retaliation, as I said, is also prohibited, and it is prohibited against a person who reports bullying, provides information during an investigation, or has reliable information. And so this is, you know, we focus a lot on this in our schools because we want students to feel comfortable. If they see something that is not okay, that they're not comfortable with, then they need to feel comfortable coming to an adult and letting an adult know without fear of retaliation. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Mara.
Thank you. Thanks for giving us this opportunity to talk about the Prevention and Intervention Plan. In 2010, you know, the regulation was passed, as you all know. 2014, there was an update on the regulation that included staff, so staff could be cited as an aggressor in a bullying situation. And so we did update the plan back in 2014 when that was, that change was made, and we did update the plan, you know, subsequent to that. Erin did describe to you just like all the definitions that need to be in the plan that's part of the regulation, the prohibition, you know, that statement of prohibition is really important, and we were careful when we, when we talk about, you know, promoting a safe and inclusive learning environment for students as part of the prohibition. We really wanted to make it strength-based and student-centered, and I think we've done that within this plan. You know, we're obligated to make sure that, like during this whole process, that our first priority is to make sure that kids are safe. So if there is a situation before an investigation starts, we could always do what we call supportive measures or safety planning, and we always make that the first priority and then continue on with the investigation. So that, I think, is a really important piece of the regulation here. And then sharing our social-emotional learning and the anti-bullying curriculum is really imperative. And I really feel like with our new platform, Open Parachute, there is a parent, there are parent links to that. That's been a real boost to our ability to share, like what is it that we're teaching kids? What do we want them to, what skills do we want them to have so that, you know, they're, they don't become targets that are not at risk of, you know, engaging in acts of bullying, and they understand what those things are? So I think having that reinforced at home and having parents have resources are really important to the effectiveness of this plan. This plan was posted for open comment, and we're really looking forward to the feedback from the school committee also. A lot of stakeholders, some principals that are here now, helped look at the plan and give suggestions and feedback. We also had some parents that the principals reached out to that were able to give us some feedback, so really appreciative of that. The EDI Citywide spent a lot of time on the plan. They gave us some feedback and had a meeting with us. So I don't think it would have been the same plan if we didn't have all that feedback. And I don't think it would be as student-focused, so it was really good to have principals and parents come together to help us with this because, you know, the plan is the plan. It's, you know, what's on paper, and it's important to have that documented on paper, but it's how it's gonna be implemented, and the principals will really talk about that. I'm really grateful for their work here. Just a, just a little bit about the bullying process and the investigation process when it comes to bullying. We really need to be sure that people understand how to file a report, what to expect during an investigation, and that staff knows what to do. So the PD, the professional development for staff, they need to know that they need to intervene in that moment, but they also need to intervene by filing a report because we don't really know the true impact of what happened. You know, we need to get all those pieces of information, so we need to do a thorough investigation. Intervention is good and really important, you know, so that the kid knows, like, hey, we care about you, we're not gonna just ignore this. Because if you don't intervene, that's the message that you're giving, like, this is okay, and we want students to trust that we're gonna do something about it, we're gonna keep them safe and protect them. So, and I think we do a really nice job about that. I do think that we need to improve upon making sure everybody's filling out that form, you know? I don't think, you know, we, you know, we've done that as much, but I do believe that we've always intervened, like, we don't ignore things. So I just don't want that to get lost, like, we're, you know, because the reports may not have been filed the way they should. You know, I think we're, the principals, you know, will talk about that more, about even some of the work they did today. So we're really working on that. It's a real goal as part of this plan. The webpage, which we will show you, you know, later on in the presentation, that really is accessible. We needed to dedicate a webpage and have resources that parents could just look, you know, on our website and find, like, a quick brochure and some, some other things, and we'll show you that. Providing the sense of safety, like I talked about, is really important, and you don't only provide a sense of safety for the kid that's been targeted, but some witnesses and bystanders, because we have to get the whole story. We have to know what's going on. So again, the principals will talk about that later on in the presentation, really important piece. Communicating with parents, you know, each, each side of the situation, I guess is the best way to say, so like, the student that may have acted in an aggressive way or, you know, I don't like to label kids as aggressors because I don't, I think the problem is the problem. I don't think kids are the problem. So, you know, kids make a mistake, and they engaged in an act of bullying, you know, we need to, like, hold the hand of the parents so that they understand, like, what happens, you know, like, we had to break down for this, for this kiddo, you know, so we can help and intervene in a meaningful way. We also need to make sure that the parent knows that we're gonna keep their child safe if they've been targeted in some way. You know, we, we can't really provide good safety without clear parent communication. If, you know, obviously, if it's referred to the police in the, in the regulation, if there's a referral to police, if it's that serious, then we definitely need to keep the parents involved in that. So communication is a huge part of the plan. And when we're disciplining around a bullying incident, you know, we're always looking at accountability and balancing accountability with learning, because in order to be preventative and to stop any kind of cycle or behavior, you know, kids need to understand their impact and what happened and be held accountable. So we have to do that social-emotional piece, and we also have to really kind of process with the kid that's been targeted. That's hard, you know, if you've been targeted, and then you have to walk back into the building. So we need to do some ongoing stuff to make sure we're supporting both those students moving forward. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Erin.
Thank you. So part of the update in 2014 was to add certain groups of students that are considered to be in protected categories. So these are students that might be more vulnerable to becoming a target of bullying or harassment based on membership in a protected category. Schools do have to take specific steps to prevent or respond to bullying or harassment for those students. And we did update our bullying policies to include information about students in protected categories. And so one of those groups of students is students with disabilities. And so I just, we just wanted to talk for a minute, a minute about how our bullying processes and protocols impact students with disabilities. So it does impact all students with disabilities, but in particular, students with autism who are on the autism spectrum. IEP teams, per the regulations, must consider how the disability specifically impacts the skills, because oftentimes, students with autism have a difficult time with social communication, things like that. And so they really need to make, they actually need to talk about it at the IEP team and talk about whether or not the student has developed the social skills in order to be able to avoid and respond to bullying or harassment or teasing. So it isn't, so that's one, one group of students that are definitely that teams need to respond to. But also, it could potentially be any student with a disability whose social skills might be impacted by their development, or by their disability. And so what the IEP team needs to do, at the end of every IEP, there is a statement under additional information that talks about how the team felt about whether or not the student potentially could be at risk for bullying. And so if the team, sometimes the team may be meeting, and there might have been a bullying incident, and if that happens, the IEP team should reconvene immediately, and they, the team needs to put in supports and services that are developed to help that student. It could be, the student could be the aggressor, or the student could be the victim. Either way, the services need to be addressed through the IEP, things like accommodation, goals for communication, modifications potentially to the curriculum through the IEP, maybe meeting with a guidance counselor, something like that, or things that could be, or communication skills, building communication skills, social stories. All of those things are potential things that could go into the IEP. And there's another scenario that could happen where the team just knows that because of the student's social skill development, even though the student may not be on the spectrum, that, that the student may be at risk for being a target of bullying. And if that is the case, then there should be goals and services and accommodations built into that IEP to help prevent the potential of being a victim of bullying in the future. And the other big consideration is whether or not, if bullying is occurring, if it is potentially denying a student a free and appropriate public education. So there are new reporting requirements, and I want to just thank Dan Pacho because he has been working with us on this. And I know that this was an area that the school committee was concerned with last year, and so I think you will appreciate these new requirements. It actually is a, you know, was a consistent concern throughout the state of Massachusetts that, you know, districts were not accurately reporting incidences of bullying. We all report discipline, but it was teasing out, you know, when it actually was bullying and making sure you're reporting it both as bullying and a disciplinary incident. And so going into effect this year, which will be certified at the end of the school year, there are new requirements that need to be submitted to the Department of Education. And so what will be required is the number of allegations of bullying or retaliation, the number and nature of substantiated incidences of bullying and retaliation. So two different buckets. You could have allegations that are not substantiated, and then also allegations that do become substantiated. And then finally, the number of students disciplined for engaging in bullying or retaliation. As I said, this information will be entered into the SSDR application at the end of the school year, and that's the School Safety and Discipline Report that we provide every single year. And so, you know, as I, as I mentioned, Dan Pacho, Mara, all of us, the principals, we've been working on this. And so this is, I want to stress that this is unofficial numbers because this, this information will not be certified until the end of the school year. So this is just for, this moment in time, what we have in terms of number of allegations at the different levels, how many have currently been substantiated, and how many students have been disciplined as a result of bullying, substantiated bullying. And so I do want to just point out at the high school level, the reason why there are seven disciplinary occurrences is because there were seven students that were involved in that one allegation of bullying. So that is, that's why that looks like that. But I just wanna, I just want to talk a little bit about how we've gotten to this point in the work that we've been doing with the principals behind the scenes. So Dan has updated a form, so even though the principals and the schools do not have to certify this information until the end of the school year, we've been, we're we've been, we've asked the principals to update this form once per month, so that we can keep an eye on the bullying allegations, substantiated numbers of incidences of bullying, and how many students are, as a result, ended, being disciplined. Mara collects all of the bullying report forms, the schools send all of the bullying report forms to her. The principals keep copies of the bullying report forms in their offices, and any substantiated allegations of bullying and any results of discipline that are, are related to that bullying are updated in Aspen. So, we have multiple systems in place, so that we're hoping to, you know, more accurately capture, you know, the number and incidences of bullying that are occurring, whether they're substantiated or not, but, so that we have an accurate count, and so that when we see things starting to maybe tick up in a, in a not great direction, that as a district, we can intervene. If we think there's a problem with the grade or with, you know, a level or school, we can certainly intervene if we need to and provide supports and service, services. I also just want to mention that we had, the other piece that we've done is quite a bit of professional development on this topic. So, we had Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane, our attorneys, come and do a professional development on the bullying regulations with administrators. We've also done professional development with the principals around the bullying report and intervention plan and, you know, our processes and procedures. The principals just did a refresher with their staff, actually, today on the, because today was a PD, PD day for us, on the, but, on the idea of reporting and how teachers play a role in this, and what their roles should be, and what does that look like. So, the principals all did that this afternoon with their staff. So, we have done, in addition to the reporting aspect, we have done a number of, we've taken a number of steps just to make sure that our staff know how to respond, they feel prepared to respond, and they have the tools that they need in order to do so. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Nick Ahern, who will talk about elementary.
Thanks, folks, and thank you all for having us here tonight, having me here tonight. Oh, sorry about that. I'm not used to this. I'm, I'm usually too loud. Oh, there we go. So, first of all, having the opportunity to talk about bullying, bullying prevention at the elementary level, so much of what we do is try and be proactive with our students, especially at the elementary level. I, I list on the slide there that it begins really with us, with me here, with our, our school committee, our, our school policies and practices, and that our staff is aware of what they are first and foremost. Speaking with staff that first day of school, and then, as Erin mentioned just today, going back and reiterating specific procedures around that. I do feel that overall in our school, as these things do come up at the elementary level in particular, we're interacting with many, many parents every single day. We have that chance to interact, talk with them every single day. So, if and when these concerns come up, staff can react, and at the same time, they can bring those considerations to us as well. So, that's step one, as we look at the process itself. In terms of training for staff, again, the same process periodically throughout the year, we will meet, discuss on these, discuss these topics. And it's not just about the, the procedures to, to prevent it, it's the proactive piece as well. It's the SEL measures, it's the PBIS measures as well, which we really hope take hold in the school. Those are not just niceties, they certainly, the children see the blue ticket winners, they see the monthly celebrations. For us, they really have a concrete, proactive approach in that our goal is really to teach children how to interact, what positive behavior looks like, and there's so many aspects to that in our school. In terms of PBIS, I know you've all heard it before, you've heard the PBIS model so many times before. It, it works in our school that we're looking to each and every day, each and every moment of every day, celebrate for us through blue tickets. That's an opportunity for us to positively celebrate and promote student behavior. If we see students that are having conflict, that there are concerns about, there are opportunities, and I'll talk about this in a few minutes, for Tier Two and even Tier Three interventions, which can come into place as well. They offer our students more of an opportunity for positive reinforcement, positive feedback throughout the day, also greater opportunities to interact with adults as well, and receive that positive interaction as well throughout the day. So, that's an aspect of, of that as well. The social-emotional curriculum here, you've, you heard Erin talk a little bit about Open Parachute. Open Parachute is what we've been using here, along with that as well, and you'll see, we'll jump back to the other one in a minute, but, social-emotional learning specifically. Some of the topics that we cover include understanding feelings, overcoming worries and doubt, anger, self-soothing and asking for help, bullying and boundary-setting, sibling and friendship, and defining bullying versus conflict. And we use not only the Open Parachute curriculum now, previously, we use programs like Steps to Respect and Second Step as well. Earlier on, I've been around a long time, so those were, some of the previous curriculums were used, and they're still certainly available. Those, those resources, that knowledge is available to our guidance staff as well. Sorry, and if you jump back to, yep, one more, sorry. Yep, you've got it. So, measuring school climate. I always say anecdotally, that's something we do every single day. Our staff is interacting with children all the time, we're talking with parents every day. I referenced the vocal survey there, because it is something that we do look at year-end, but hopefully we're checking in with, with students constantly. I greet just about all of my students at the curb every single day, and I'm watching them, I'm checking in with them, I'm talking to parents every day, and I know so many of my colleagues at the elementary, middle school, and high school level are doing the same things as well. So, we're really getting a feel for those needs that our children are experiencing, what are their concerns, and if there are things going on in school that are making their child feel uncomfortable or unsafe, we're able to communicate quickly and hopefully expeditiously to resolve any problems that come up along the way as well. In terms of outside resources and professional development, Open, Open Parachute has been a new resource this year. We've done some modeling with our guidance staff, for our classroom teachers as well. We also just had Mark come in, Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center through Bridgewater State, did a wonderful presentation for our fourth grade students on, to, again, attempt to be proactive. We're seeing more and more cell phones. I, I can remember a day where, even ten, twelve years ago, where very few of our fourth grade students had access to cell phones. We see a lot more of it now, and so, we see that line moving down where children are interacting with social media, not all of them, but some of them. And so, we want to try and be proactive in that as well. And I think it was an incredible resource for our fourth grade kids as well. So, it certainly works to support them as well. Our DEI teams, or EDI teams at the Clifford Marshall, we have a group of parents and staff who work together. And the goal there, as you can see, is to, again, celebrate differences, but also preach inclusivity and connectedness with our students. And these are the types of things that, early on, these are the bases we want to build in our kids, that, that allow them to connect in our school community and, and be together in the school community to hopefully nip some of those bullying concerns, you know, early on, at an early age. Restorative practices, this is something so often, I was just meeting with students today on this, restorative practices early on, where we're talking with children, more typically in those conflict situations, but children are able to kind of express their concerns, share their feelings about a given situation, and it really does allow us to, to address student needs. And it's such a powerful thing, when you hear one student saying to another student how something made them feel, and, and having that opportunity to have that conversation, it's really just a powerful experience. And last but not least, certainly, community building through circles. I'll share a little bit, one of the community circle prompts that we'll use in classrooms as well. We don't use them every day, we use them periodically as different needs come up in classrooms, where teachers will even lead conversations about different topics that may be a need in a given classroom or another. But they're great resources, great opportunities, and that the staff feels empowered to use those as needed as well. If you jump onto the next slide. So, specifically PBIS, which is a topic that you've heard about before, but again, I talk so much about being proactive with things. So, you see there at the top, a few of our blue ticket winners. Each week, we're celebrating blue ticket winners. But the work behind that, those blue tickets, is really staff constantly and continually handing out those blue tickets to students as they exhibit positive behavior. We tie those things in often as well to monthly themes as well. So, you'll see there, January, our theme is helpful. February this month, we're celebrating kindness, and in March, we'll be celebrating hard-working work. Now, teachers are going to give out blue tickets for any, any behavior at any given time. It's a real positive way to reinforce the positive that we see every day, but we specifically target certain words each and every month, and we're using those words, we're explicitly defining what they look like, what they mean, and talking about them with kids, so they understand that this is what the type of behavior we're looking for in the school environment. One of the other things at PBIS, and I skipped over it real quickly, the Learning Behavioral Matrix Expectations. It really defines for our students at the start of the year, in classrooms, at the playground, in our hallways, in the cafeteria, what appropriate behavior looks like, which obviously excludes behaviors that, that would include bullying. So, we're looking to address these things proactively early on, and hopefully, support all of our students in making sure, again, it's a safe space. School climate check-ins with community circles, again, I had mentioned those community circles that we do hold in our classroom. Each and every month, we're sharing a prompt, specifically this month would be named Two Ways You Might Help a Friend Who Is Having a Hard Time. It's meant to feed into that idea of kindness, but these are the types of things, resources, that our teachers can lean on, and they're constantly promoting connectivity for our students, and, and certainly that positive interaction. Finally, multiple tiers of, of support through our PBIS model. Tier Two supports would include things like check-in, checkout for our students, as we have students that are struggling with behaviors. We're, we're looking, for instance, with a, a check-in, checkout tool that might mean a teacher's interacting with them every hour and giving them immediate feedback for that student of what their, their last hour looked like in a given classroom. They would have a check-in in the morning with a preferred adult, and a checkout in the afternoon with that preferred, preferred adult as well. These are the types of things that, again, we can use to be proactive as we have a child that might be struggling with certain behaviors that we are trying to curb or curtail. So, this is the, the real positive aspects that we can take from the elementary school and try and be proactive in addressing so many of the challenges that we face out there. Jumping on to SEL, I did share these already with you, but again, this is the Open Parachute program, Steps to Respect and, and Second Step, which are some of the resources that our guidance staff would pull on as well. And again, our hope is to, to be proactive in talking to children, not just about what happens when bullying comes up, but again, if you see bullying, what you should do about it, who you should interact with, who you should tell. And again, if, if your child, you know, we want to empower sometimes those children who could be victims as well, to say, this is not okay, this is not all right, and I'm not okay with this. And that's a real positive experience as well for kids. As we say, somebody, hear somebody say, I'm, I don't like this, I'm not okay with this. And so, those are the types of skills we want to give our kids as well, and hopefully, what we see continue to take hold in time. Bullying does come up. I painted for you a lot of the, the positive, the proactive. I know that my colleague, Ms. Mitchell, will share with you a little bit of, of what occurs specifically from a parent end, but I will tell you that from the elementary school model, so much of us, so much of the work we do, it's about constant communication. It's making sure that we're communicating with our parents, both an aggressor, a potential aggressor, and a victim as well, and making sure that they feel comfortable with the process, the steps that we're taking, to make sure that their child feels safe at our school every day. So, there's a lot. And again, it's not meant to be just, just fluff. It's really there with a reason in mind. So, much of it is, it's, when I was at school, we didn't have a lot of these things, and I'm so grateful that we take time out of our school day for this to be a part of our, our school experience. It really helps our kids be, be in a safe environment.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to talk about the middle school approach, which is actually very similar to the elementary approach, which you wouldn't think, but we, we really try to be as proactive as possible, giving students as many opportunities to talk, to staff that they trust, and to just reinforce good behaviors. I do have to say, before I start to talk about how we build community, we have a great staff, and I, I think I can speak for Mr. Ahern and Mr. Gilbert, when we say this, we have great teachers and a fantastic guidance staff who listen to kids, and they respond, they're reflective of the building and what happens in the building during the day. So, we're very fortunate to have that. So, a few things that we do at the middle school level, and I'll speak specifically to Southwest, we have weekly Open Parachute Circles, which occur during our student support block. We also have DEI and cultural lessons for students to have the opportunity to understand different cultures and talk about their life experiences. And similarly to elementary, we do have our PBIS, PBIS Character Trait Focus, and ours is also kindness and compassion for the month of February. In addition to that, we have monthly community meetings with each grade. So, we celebrate students who have accumulated as many tickets as possible, we put them into a bin, we pick, and we really up the prizes for that one. So, students are really excited to get gift cards, different things for their positive behavior. Our school, as you know, we're working on One Book, One School, and the two books that we've had, they have a specific focus on a challenge. The main character usually has a challenge that they look at and talk about. And so, it's great discussion for these students in our SSB block. Similar, again, to the elementary level, we look at our social-emotional learning and our staff response to bullying, which we did start to review again today. Like Mara and Erin were saying, we have dealt with bullying in the past. We have great staff who deal with that, who talk to parents, who talk to students, but we are in the habit of refreshing our staff with what we do with the paperwork, what that looks like, what is the process. So, we talked a lot about that today and came up with some, some different conclusions on how to support these kids that we may have not thought about before. In addition to that, at Southwest, we have implemented an MTSS team for our staff. We have about ten to twelve staff members on that. And what we're going to do, our first meeting will be in March, we are going to look at the whole child. So, we're going to look at discipline, we're going to look at our bullying reports, we're going to look at academics, and try to make different plans for the whole child. So, that's new, and we're really, we're really excited to start that as a team. And for our students, we are going to set a principal council. The first meeting is in March. Each homeroom appoints a student, and that's going to be a place where students can report out about the culture and climate of the building, and we're hoping to talk as a staff and support those students. So, if there's a concern with the bathroom, or there's a concern at lunch, we're hoping that that's a safe place for students to report to us, and we can, can work on those areas in the building. The next slide is just our expectations for learning and behaviors. Ours is respectful and responsible ready, so students earn tickets for being ready for class, responsible in the hallway, and being respectful as the day goes on. So, we have our weekly raffle prizes. Every Thursday afternoon, we give those out. Our shout-outs are every morning to acknowledge students, and we have our trimester prizes, as well as our grade-level incentive prizes. This is just, this goes home to the parents each week, so these are our PBIS winners. So, the parents are able to see their child's name. And then, the following slide is our shout-out. So, this is just an example of what's read off during the morning announcements in support of students to brighten their day and give them a little credit for following the rules. So, community building is really reinforced through our restorative circles. That, those can take places, they take place during SSB. Sometimes they are a, a homeroom-based circle. And we talk about different things that happen in the school. Some of, some of the circle prompts are just positive prompts to get feedback from students. So, this is an example of one. We invited students to think of someone for whom they would like to make the world a better place, and we asked them to write down a person's name on a piece of paper and place it in the center of the circle. And that's how we started our circle. Then, we asked at the end, each person to write a strength or a word or a statement on the card. And so, some of the student feedback that we got, as you can see, you can always report issues to a teacher or staff member, which made us really happy about that. Students are respectful to each other. I have friends who have the same interests as me, I have a voice. So, we had, we get really great feedback from these. I do want to add a very important piece to this, is that we do get feedback sometimes that isn't always positive, or a concern from a student. And so, we do take that information and address that. So, it's a good way to communicate and, and kind of get a feel for the climate and culture of either that grade or that The next slide is our social-emotional learning, and this is an example of what we talk about. Our December circling prompts, what generosity means to you, what is the hardest part about being a student, what do you think is the hardest job of a teacher? And then, our Open Parachute lessons. In January, for our fifth grade, were Worries, Anxiety, Resilience. Sixth was Learning Challenges, Motivation, and Overcoming Trauma. And seventh and eighth grade, our eighth graders both looked at Leadership and Overcoming Objectification. And I do want to add that Ms. Papil had Dove come in, and what was really great this past month, the seventh and eighth graders talked about power within a relationship. So, as we talk about bullying, we talk about the power of that peer relationship, and that plays such an important piece in, in our investigations and how we look at situations. So, that actually happened to be very great timing, that they looked at that. So, that, we use these circles also, again, to get some feedback from students and, and make adjustments to our practice. And then, in the reporting piece, you know, what students and families can expect is that when the word bullying is used or a concern is brought to us, that whoever the staff member is would fill out the form, would, would start the flow of this report. We'd have open communication with the family, we'd listen to them, we'd listen to the student, and then, we would start our investigation into the situation. We would work to support the target. That could be anything like making a safety plan to looking at their schedule, talking about what the hallway looks like, where are you most intimidated? about what the hallway looks like, where are you most intimidated during the day, and working with that student specifically. Discipline referrals as well, alerting our staff members, which is hugely important, so everyone is on the same page, because you want to make sure that these kids feel supported, that their families feel supported, and that everyone is working to make sure that this situation is not on the forefront of the student's mind every day. And then we give them available resources, and we look at our documentation, making sure that everything is reported accurately, and especially that the parents and families, the parents, the families, and the students have some type of closure with the situation. And I will hand it over to Mr. Gilbert.
Good evening, everyone. They said everything I did, or was going to say, so I guess I'm good. I think many times when you start talking about high school, the expectation is that kids should have learned all this in elementary school or in middle school. When I was teaching, I always thought, like, did they not teach how to write a topic sentence in elementary school? And then I became an elementary school principal and learned that they do, in fact, do all those things. And then I went back to middle school, and then when a teacher would say, hey, don't, then I would say, oh, they do. And I think it's equally as important to highlight the things that do happen at high school, because there is not, we're not, no one would ever not take the opportunity at high school to continue the work that has been done in elementary school and middle school. And sometimes it doesn't click for kids, what it means to be an upstander, until they get to high school, or until they get to certain situations that require them to think about things that have been told to them so many times, but for the first time, it really resonates with them in a way that is meaningful. And so, you know, the word proactive has been used a lot tonight, and it'll be echoed in my sentiments as well, in our approaches to trying to build a community and a school culture that cherishes upstanders and helps kids to understand the role that they can play and the power they have in making sure that bullying does not take place and has no space at the high school level. So you'll see a picture on that first slide. That is, that's our Boys to Men group. It is male leaders that are mentoring younger students, and there's a female version, it doesn't have as cool a name as Boys to Men. I don't know if anybody likes Boys to Men. My wife loves Boys to Men. So that's a group. That's a group, I hear. She's going to a concert this weekend. It's going to be great. I'll be home with all three children by myself and coaching four games at the same time. But it is a mentoring program between seniors and juniors and sophomores and freshmen. Students that we feel as though may be vulnerable to certain situations, we connect them with a mentor, a strong, a student who has a lot of resources to help kind of younger kids navigate their way through high school. A lot of the focus is on freshmen, because freshmen tend to struggle with the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. We have a Making Positive Changes student group, which is, you know, kind of nine through 12, kids that are really interested in making changes at North Quincy High School to improve the climate and culture and experience for all of the students. I meet with them frequently. They are an extension of our Culture and Climate Team, which is a group of staff members that meet along with me after school once a month to look at, how do we improve the culture of the school for our staff, but also for our kids? Open parachute, you've heard about. There is a specific module for ninth grade, which is taught through health class, that focuses specifically on bullying, and then 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. A little bit more narrow, and not necessarily specifically on bullying, but it might be on relationships, differential between dating, and how those relationships can manifest themselves in ways that kids need to know how to navigate their way through. Restorative Justice is certainly very active at the high school level as well. We have a Making Healthy Choices group for students that have not necessarily made the healthiest choices, but we have a clinician that comes in, along with our health interventionist, to talk to kids about how to make better choices, how to remove themselves from situations that they know are going to put them in a position that they don't necessarily have the skills or the ability to self-regulate in a way that's going to result in a positive outcome. Our Wellness Week will take place the week, excuse me, the week after February vacation, and that's a daily, that one week is a planned event each day to give kids opportunities to develop skills, whether it be around mediation, or, excuse me, meditation, or conflict resolution. We have some people that come in to do those things. And our ninth and 10th graders go through health class and work with Caitlin Plaskavitis and Ryan Hurley in 10th grade. So there's a lot of things that happen at the high school to try to build and help kids understand how to be an upstander, how to be a member of a school that cherishes everyone's uniqueness at a time when it's much easier to not be unique, and much easier to conform as opposed to standing up for what is best for you. As was said earlier, we did take the opportunity today to go over again the regulations, the form itself, how to report if a student comes to you. And it's really not anyone's decision to decide on the spot if a kid comes and says, I'm being targeted, or I'm being bullied. There is a clear protocol that I'll talk about in a bit, but it is important that every adult at our school understands how to approach a situation when a student conveys something in them, which might take weeks for them to finally get the courage to say something. And so as much as this is about putting programs in place, it's also about building relationships with kids, so they have somebody at school that they trust enough to go and say, you know, I'm being harassed by so-and-so, or this kid continues to do this on a daily basis. I need help. I can't solve this situation on my own. And so, you know, we spend a lot of time talking about those things with our deans and our guidance counselors, with our adjustment counselor, but you know, as well as I do, that the people that see our kids the most are our teachers, and they need to be as well-equipped as anyone to deal with situations that arise. I can't remember the number of decisions. Carmen used to say it all the time, the number of decisions a teacher makes per day, I don't know, 30,000, 10,000, 100,000, I don't remember, but it's a lot. And our teachers need to know how to navigate those situations as much as anybody else. And though they don't do the investigation, and they don't do the interviews, their role in what happens in situations like this is as important as anybody else. If there is, or a teacher comes to us with a concern, or a kid has approached them, or a parent has called them, then we will respond in a way that uses, you know, the proper forms and protocols to begin an investigation. It is critical to talk to parents of both the student that's reporting, but also possibly the student that is the aggressor or the bully. Teachers are trained, as I said, to make sure that they bring the information to the deans or to the guidance counselors, and then it's the job of the deans, the assistant principals, and the principals to try to figure out and tease out the allegations themselves. You can imagine that at the high school level, some of those situations are very tricky. There's a lot of nuance in teasing those things out, but it's very important that we interview everybody, that we need to communicate with everybody's parent, and then if, in fact, we do believe at the end that the allegation of bullying is substantiated, there are certainly disciplinary consequences that are imposed, of which is communicate with parents of both groups, keeping in mind that FERPA is still intact when it comes to talking about other situations not related to their own student. Equally important, once all that takes place, it's still really important to make sure that if a kid does, and there is a situation where bullying is substantiated, that that student has the opportunity to process and to learn from what happened. And so restorative practices, tier twos, and the forums that we use, provides a really great opportunity for kids to have the opportunity to think about what happened, to think about how their actions affected other people, to think about how, moving forward, we can repair harm so that this doesn't happen again. And so, you know, on the next screen, if you don't mind, you kind of get an idea of the process we go through with students in situations like this. We might use this just in a regular situation where it's just a conflict and not bullying, but it's really important that you honor the student and their experience, making sure that we can think of ways to alleviate any situations that would lead to any kind of feelings that are uncomfortable for the student that was targeted. Sometimes it's class schedule changes, sometimes it's the adjustment counselor that we use to check in on a daily basis. It could be a number of different things that we do at the high school level to make sure that our kids are safe, but also that everybody's learning and moving forward as a result of what we've put in place. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So lastly, we just wanted to share with you, I think we have to thank, I'm going to drive the website, but we'll let Mara walk you through it, but we have to thank Kelly Powers, because she has done an amazing job building this, so. There you go, Mara.
Yeah, I mean, she really did it all. I'm like, I kind of want this, and she's like, okay. So right here, we just made a special page for the implementation plan, just to kind of like, just to kind of state like what the purpose of that page is, access the plan. If you don't mind clicking on the plan. So within the plan, you know, you're going to see the whole thing, and one important piece of the plan, I just wanted you to see, and I don't know if you can find it, but it's the Interactive Anonymous Report Form. So people are able to make anonymous reports. They'll make them to me. I will get all those reports once we make this live. I'm going to tell you that anonymous reports are hard to investigate, like, you know, if we don't have a lot of detail, and we cannot support an allegation of bullying just on an anonymous report, but it might give us some insight to something that might be happening into a building, and people might already be aware of the situation, or might have some sense of something that's going, so it's important. So if people don't feel comfortable enough to make, you know, fill out the regular form, at least if they send an anonymous report, I will read it. I will do the best I can with the information, but that is part of the regulation. We did make it interactive, if we can find it. No, no, it's a long plan. So I also, you can actually get out of this, and we can go to the brochure, because on the brochure that people can click on, that's like a quick hit. So like, if you want to figure out how to fill out the form, you can. Just some information about, it's okay. That's okay. So it's just a brochure, it's just a brief way for people to look at it. I mean, it's overwhelming when you look at the whole plan. It's a lot, and we have to include all that information in there, because it's the regulation, you have to include all that information, but it's overwhelming. But know that, you know, people are specially trained, you know, at the sites. Like, if you have a concern, just reach out to your principal, your guidance counselor, they'll walk you through the process. You know, I think, you know, it is hard, it's a hard conversation, you know, when, you know, we're talking about bullying, because with parents and kids, you know, that's who we're talking about. You know, if you're a parent and you're hearing someone is calling your kid a bully, that's hard. And what we like to say is, you know, we don't know what we're looking at, like, we need to figure out what's going on, because oftentimes, it will look one way at the beginning and look very different. So you'll see, like, the allegations and the terms people use, bullying when there's a conflict. You know, often, it's confusing, you know, like, it has to meet the certain criteria. So you'll see, like, a lot of allegations and not necessarily a lot of supports, but it doesn't mean there wasn't a good intervention. I just don't want, you know, to think, just because we didn't support it for bullying, doesn't mean that nothing happened. It means that maybe we resolved it in a way, better way than a bullying report might have been, you know, so if people can kind of keep that in mind. But that is the brochure that you're seeing there, so you can play around with it. And if you have any suggestions about the brochure, about the page, you know, certainly let me know, and we can add things to it. And so that's all I had. So thank you so much for your attention.
Questions? Comments? Mr. Gatto?
Got like a dozen. First of all, thank you, thank you for the presentation, for the time that you put in and for making this a priority throughout the school system. I know that we've been talking about it, it's important. We were, in so many, in so many different ways over the last four years, especially during COVID, and some of the cyberbullying issues, and some of the concerns around that. So it's fascinating to get a comprehensive picture of it. I know that one of the things that the school committee's asked for is kind of a list of incidents in every school. One, a bit of it is bullying, you know, like, what are the incidents? Could be vaping, could be fights, could be whatever, you know, so that we have the breakdown and that we understand how they're all dealt with, and we'll take that at a different meeting. This is one bit. I like the data. I love looking at data, especially the breakdown by high school, middle school, elementary I was wondering if you could talk a little bit, because I remember during the school improvement plans, we talked a little bit about the vocal surveys, and the perceptions versus the reporting versus the substantiation versus the resolution. So the vocal surveys, I think, students felt that there was more of it going on. I mean, some of the data, depending on what you were looking at, suggested that, have I ever seen a fight, or have I witnessed bullying? And those numbers were high, you know, and the raw numbers of allegations, you know, I had a bunch of questions about that, which were, what percentage of those were anonymous? Was this before the anonymous tip sheet? Were these all actual allegations by?
Yeah, none of those are anonymous.
So is the anonymous ability new? Is that something new?
Well, it's always been in the regulation. You could always, like, for parents to really file or, you know, initiate a bullying report, they can just send an email. They don't have to do the report form. We just wanted to make that report form more accessible to them.
This is the first time you can submit anonymously?
No, people can always, you know, you've always been able to do that.
How do you do that?
Well, I mean, people would just call and say, I don't want to be identified, I'm reporting anonymously, you know what I mean? And, you know, it does make it, you know, it does make it really hard to do a good intervention if no one's supposed to know, like, know what we're talking about. But the online is new. That interactive form is making it easier to report anonymously, you know, so that they're, you know, not afraid to call, that they can make an anonymous report.
So I won't ask 12 questions at once. I'll stick with the first one, perception versus reporting versus substantiation and closure. I'm with your theory on why students might think that there's more of it going on than has been reported.
That's something that we talked about today at our meeting, very specifically, and how we are going to review that with students. So I think it's consistently explaining to kids bullying versus conflict, and that's confusing, especially, I think, in the earlier grades, like the elementary with fifth and sixth grade. Even seventh and eighth graders say it jokingly, but now it's going to take on like a little new process when they do say that. I think it's the understanding that that word is serious, and that we have to continue to teach them, and teachers understand the difference, too. And we had teachers today that said, can we go over this in homeroom tomorrow? You know, can we just review? Because they use it out of context very frequently, and we really need to educate them about the difference.
No, and I was going to say, in so much proactively, even when it's conflict, we're still looking, so much of the proactive work that I said we do, we're looking to resolve those situations anyway. So whether it be, you know, we're looking at what kind of supports we can put in place for that child. For us, it certainly matters, the distinction between the two matters, and I think Ms. Mitchell said it so well when we're talking about the distinction between conflict versus bullying. I think sometimes that may be the language that either a parent or a child may reach to at times, but it doesn't mean there's not a problem there, whether it's substantiated or not. And so much I can speak to at the elementary level, where the children are right in front of us, there's maybe not as much of the outside of school that can come up, but it's more during the day, and we're really looking at those structures, saying, what can we intervene and what can we fix, regardless of whether it's bullying or not.
So I'll stay with you, Nick. For the 28 allegations at the elementary level, two substantiated, does that mean the other 26 were conflicts, or there was nothing? In some cases, there was nothing?
Yeah, I would just say, I couldn't speak to them all. What I could say is, in my school, there are situations of conflict that arises. We do, you know, we are told that there may be a situation of bullying, we do an investigation into it, and we're communicating with a parent or parents and students in determining that it's conflict. it's conflict, it's pure conflict with one student and another student, but it doesn't rise to a place of bullying.
Because it's not repetitive.
Correct. Repetitive and causing that imbalance of power. You know, two students that may be interacting, we were talking about this, two students that may be interacting in kindergarten where there's a student who may be dysregulated or students that are learning to be a part of a school community, it may lead to negative behavior and it may be that a parent reports to us that there's a bullying situation, you know, first time interaction with a child, two children interacting in a classroom, it may not rise to level of bullying, it doesn't mean that it's not something we're not cognizant and aware of and something that we're trying to impact.
And I think it just goes back to the definition of bullying, like, there's certain criteria. So when you're looking at trying to, you know, figure out whether it's bullying or not bullying, you have to look at the power differential, like, numbers matter. There, like, in the one high school situation where there were seven disciplinary actions, that meant there were seven kids against one kid. So clearly, that was a case of bullying, do you know what I mean? So like, things will come in as conflicts, but kids are saying they're being bullied, but really, there was like a lot of back and forth that went on, do you know what I mean? So that's why we have to really help people to understand what it is. But we're like mandated reporters, if we just suspect that it could possibly be bullying, you know, we have to initiate the bullying investigation because we have to make that determination. Once it's kind of said, we have to take it on as an investigation.
And the breakdown wasn't in here, but if you had to at each level, say, this percentage was verbal, this percentage was written, this percentage was electronic? Because I think that's what you said at the beginning, that's what, is most of it verbal?
I think a lot of it is verbal, but I think it can carry over into all three categories sometimes. So I think that, you know, sometimes electronics play into it, social media can impact it, you know, something can start in school and then continue after. I think I said this last time that we spoke, sometimes things don't start as bullying and then end up there in the end, you know? And that can be because now all of a sudden, you know, something, something maybe happened during the day and it ends up on social media and now you have, you know, 20 children jumping in on this post, picking on this one student, you know? And that's what happens. And so it, you know, so it might have started with something during the school day, you know, and then it transitioned into on social media or on electronics or?
Just the seven substantiated seems low, you know, I mean, so, and versus the perception of the students in the vocal surveys, you know, I mean, that's great, I'm excited that there's not, thus far this year, this academic, there's seven substantiated cases, which seems low. So, other question. Do parents agree or dispute with the characterization of conflict versus bullying for the most part?
Sometimes, you know, sometimes it's disagreement, sometimes it's so clear that, you know?
They think it's bullying and you might identify it as a conflict.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes we get like, you know, text messages and part of the conversation's missing, so sometimes their child might present, you know, maybe their participation because, but they're still having a hard time, do you know what I mean? Their kid is still struggling, so it still matters and we'll take care of it. Sometimes it's just, it's just they're young and it's hard to, like, take accountability for your piece, but then it like spins out of control, so maybe it is bullying, do you know what I mean?
I do.
So I just think that, you know, parents are so worried and concerned for their kids. And I understand that, and, you know, we have to make sure that everybody's okay. So sometimes it feels like, it may feel like bullying, but they only have that information coming from their child, they don't have like the whole picture of what's happening. And it doesn't matter, like, we want to, we want to help kids no matter what it is, whether it's conflict, whether it's bullying, you know, so.
Two final questions. So the, I guess the closure question. Do you feel like both sides of all of these incidents, is it 90% both the victim and the perpetrator feel like there's been closure and the principals and whoever else has witnessed it? I mean, closure's tough to?
Yeah, I would just say, I think so many situations that are conflict or, you know, for us at the elementary school, children who, again, it may be dysregulation, additional supports we're looking for, our supports are ongoing. And so when you say closure, it's, you know, we may be more proactive about a situation. I guess by that term, there's closure in the sense that we feel that we put in greater supports. We're hypervigilant of these situations. So in terms of closure, a lot of these situations, they're not done, they're not over. We're, you know, looking to support continuously as best we can and hopefully see long-term progress for a student or child.
I guess, and that's a good point. Is it closure in our eyes or is it closure in the eyes of the student?
Yeah, I think, you know, the difference between concluding the investigation versus closure for the kid. Sometimes, you know, I've been in situations where it takes weeks to feel like that student has closure because of the supports that have been put in place for them. Sometimes it takes a day. Sometimes restorative practices are not appropriate for situations like this because of the level of what happened. But I think it's important for us to always, you know, keep in mind that each situation is unique, each kid is different, and so what we need to put in place for a student to feel closure is going to be very different for me than it would be for Courtney or it would be for Nick or whomever. It might be different for a senior versus a freshman, or it might be different for a student in a substantially separate program versus a, you know, not.
How many of these allegations were around social media?
A lot, a lot.
Yeah.
A lot happens on social media and then spills over, you know, it's a good percentage. I can't really think of much that goes on that doesn't have social media.
Well, that's why, you know, you've got 28 at the elementary and only two substantiated and so that, you can't, like, nobody's sharing the social media posts to substantiate? Or they just, I mean, if it's happening on social media?
Well, I would say, I'm sorry, like, at the middle school and the high school level, I would say it's more social media related. Yeah, the elementary level, I would say, because I see all the reports. I would say that, like, I think it is about the learning, the difference between, you know, conflict and bullying, because they're learning, they're so young.
Understood.
Yeah.
But for the others, middle and high school?
I think that there's so much, like we were saying earlier, that happens either starts in school and spills over outside, continues outside, or vice versa. And I do, in some experiences that I've had, one side is reporting and gives us some evidence and we can't always get that from the other side, so sometimes that plays into, you know, the outcome of that.
So is it bullying if it's verbal in school and then the next day or later that week, it's on social media? That's repetitive, is that not repetitive enough?
Yeah, maybe. It's really hard to get into like, because every situation has so many different details and depending on how, how much students interact with each other and how many people see it or support it. And sometimes students and their parents, we've seen, have different opinions about the situation too. A child may say, oh, there, my friend, we were, you know, had a falling out and their parent views that a little bit differently. So there's all different parts of that that make it a little messy sometimes.
And the final question, did you say this went out for feedback or comment by parents and students and all that? And is that open right now or did you get stakeholder comments? And if so, is there a summary of those comments?
We actually incorporated some of the suggestions that we got from parents. So we did a presentation for Citywide, we've had it posted on the website until there was like a, I think a six week, at least six week, maybe eight weeks. We extended that deadline to make sure.
What were the comments, like, big categories of comments?
Actually, some parents wrote, like, wrote, gave us like paragraphs that, you know, of things that they would like to see, you know, some of the wording, some of the order, you know, so there was all kinds of different things. We didn't obviously take every suggestion, but we did incorporate the things, some, you know, important things, I think, you know, in terms of like language choices, making it more like student-focused, you know, so there was like student voice in there a little bit more than there was. So we, they did a lot of work, parents did a lot of work, principals did a lot of work, you know?
Teachers.
Teachers, yeah, so we had, you know, we had a lot of different stakeholders give us feedback.
And the plan is complete? And was there or is there planned professional development?
Yes. So, well, we have, we've been having ongoing professional development and we had one today, but we've also been, you know, met with the principals and this is, this topic has been brought up numerous times. But, you know, I think that in terms of the plan, this was kind of our last step, was, you know, having, giving it to you all, having you look at it, giving us some feedback from the school committee. And then our hope is to make it final and have the website go live with the updated plan.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Any more else? Mrs. Hubley?
Thank you. This is a wonderful presentation, thank you so much, this is really, really great stuff. Just a few questions. What did you say the timeline was for the chart that you got this year?
So this is from September to now.
September to now.
Yeah.
Okay. And you said that, I was going to say, a lot of my questions were already answered, trying to see. So the number of alleged, you already said that it's, could, it was high because of conflict versus bullying. One thing that's really disheartening for me is when I hear kindergarten parents say, oh, there's a bully in my kid's class. And then that kid is labeled throughout elementary school as being the bully, because once you get a label in kindergarten, it sticks with you. Is there something that we're doing now that is educating parents on the word terminology? Like you're saying, bullying is a very hard, it's a very strong word. And when they are labeled with that in kindergarten, that is impactful for them, for a lot of their elementary education. So is there something that we're doing to educate parents on this bullying versus conflict words when they're in, going into kindergarten or the elementary school ages?
Thank you. I would say we could probably do more. You know, we talk a lot with parents about, I would agree with you 100%, it's hard to hear and we do hear that from times and a lot of times, it is conflict, that's it. I know several years back, we actually did do a presentation for parents at one of our PTO meetings on the distinctions between the two and what they look like. We have not circled back to that this year, so we have in the past. The kindergarten orientation, I would say, there's a lot that comes at parents and families, so it might be something that we could look into and I don't know about my elementary colleagues, but it might be something we could look at earlier on at PTO meetings, that might be a place where it would be most effective. As I said, we had done a presentation in previous years, but we have not done anything this year on it.
Yeah, so one of the things we were talking about, because actually, that very same idea and comment Nick brought up at the principals' meeting that we had, so we've actually talked a lot about this. And one of the things that we talked about, I know you all know that we have Welcome to Kindergarten, and so we actually thought that that might be a nice place to talk about the idea of, you know, what this looks like and what this means, so that, you know, because it is, it is something that happens when, you know, kids come to school with lots of different experiences in terms of their preschool or not preschool, you know? And so sometimes it does take children a little bit of time to settle down, get used to the routine, become acclimated to, you know, the school rules and, you know, kind of the way the day functions. And some children have a harder time with that than others. And so what we don't want is, when you have that student that is struggling to adapt to the, you know, kindergarten for the first time, which is understandable, that those children get labeled as a bully because of that. So we are concerned about that and so that was one of the ideas that we came up with is including it in the kindergarten orientations, but also we thought including it in Welcome to Kindergarten would be a nice thing too.
Yeah. And also on the website, is there anything on there in your descriptions that talk about maybe for kindergarten parents talking about social maturity and when they're going into kindergarten, this is a, because it's almost like, to me, it's almost like a different, separate little thing, because you're just starting off and the parents are so new to the school experience and other kids, I mean, some kids that have, parents that have been through preschool get it, but the ones that are just starting off in kindergarten for the first time and haven't had that preschool experience, they're sending their world to school and another kid comes up and hits them or touches them in a way or anything and, you know, that's very upsetting. And to them, they're immediately jumping to, my kid's being bullied, you know, they're being targeted, they're, you know, and they don't understand that it's, a lot of it is social, just the social maturity just isn't there and how to interact with other kids in the class and other kids are sitting in my seat or taking my pencil, you know, or something like that. So I would like to see if there was something on the, even on the website, that was something exclusive to new parents or kindergarten, like I said, even new parents, but kindergarten parents exclusively, I would say.
That's a great idea.
Thank you, that was all I had.
Mrs. Lebo?
Thank you. So thank you for this, it was really, really great and timely, I'm really happy to see it, I've got so many things to say. First of all, I want to say, I'm so glad about the professional development. One of our issues were pre-pandemic, was that we didn't, it didn't look like schools were reporting it as much as they probably should have been. We had heard, we had heard items of bullying that we could substantiate almost and the schools were saying there was none. And so the professional development, especially around who determines it, because it's up to the schools, it's not up to you folks. And at the high schools, it seems like you've given that responsibility to the deans.
Well, the principal ultimately makes the determination, but the deans conduct the investigation. So in every one of our schools, the determination is made by the principal and no one else, you know, obviously with input, but it is in, according, it's part of the regulation that it ultimately lands on the president.
The difficult thing is, and we all know this, is that the school is marked down if you have incidences. And then, but do I report it? I mean, it's the Department of Education again with their horrible head, twisting us into all sorts of things, which is unfortunate, but anyway. So I'm really glad the professional development is coming and I hope that there's some collaboration between them and with youth people too, that when they talk about, you know, is this bullying? Because bullying is a buzzword now, it really is a buzzword, and I think it's being used all the time and now the state requiring us to have this very, very dense, a lot, plan in place doesn't help because where do we start talking about conflict? We should actually be talking about conflict more, because way more of what's happening, way more of what's happening in the schools is conflict, it really is.
Yep.
But we're talking about this and we have to, I understand that, we have this very dense plan and we have to do it because we have to. And we should probably do it, but I think we really need to start talking to Mrs. Hubley's point a little bit more about conflict and what conflict is, when we talk to our kids and when we talk to our parents, you know, that we need to resolve the conflict because it's driving the bus, it's the tail wagging the dog type of thing now, because that buzzword is so out there and everybody does use it right away, that somebody's being bullied. So I appreciate that the professional development is going on. I have a couple of questions though. Who decides if criminal charges are going to be filed? Is it the parent or the school?
It could be either, but mostly the parent.
Yeah, yeah, it's usually the parent that makes.
And I've heard parents feel uncomfortable being the person that does that, not knowing, because a couple of parents have said to me, they told me I had to, that I want to file charges, and I thought they should be filing charges, because they were like the organization that was running this thing. I didn't think I should have to file the charges. So I think some parents are concerned about that, if they have to be the person that files the charges.
But I think that, and Mara can jump in, but I think that we try very hard not to file charges against children if we don't have to. I mean, we don't want the court involved in a kid's life if they don't need to, so for us, it really is the last, 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 absolute last resort, because it's a big step, it's a big step for families and you talk about labeling children, I mean, that can destroy a child's life. And so we don't do it unless we absolutely have to. And I can understand why parents, you know, might be frustrated or concerned with that, you know, if they're feeling like the situation is, you know, really, really serious, you know, but they do have the right to file, sometimes they make that decision, you know, if they feel it's to that level. Sometimes we may agree with that and sometimes we don't, you know, but we, it's not our automatic response, it is, in fact, I would say, our absolute last response.
We work with our school resource offices too, in those serious situations, to kind of parse out what would be potentially a criminal charge and what would be something we could handle at the school level.
I also really love the idea of the restorative circles and the way they're being used, but I think that's another place where we can talk about conflict and say to kids, and keep reiterating that word, this is a conflict you're having, so that people understand there is such a thing as a conflict that doesn't range to the level of bullying. The other thing I've heard, and this is in the past, this is all pre-pandemic stuff, so who knows, when the pandemic was, a whole different thing, that frequently, the target is the person who has to change their schedule, change their school, change their doors that they enter, change their... That frequently, the target is the person who has to change their schedule, change their school, change their doors that they enter, change their classrooms, and it's not the perpetrator. And that's.
That's, that's not our practice, I mean, I'll let the principal speak to that, but our practice is.
I mean, when it gets to the point where you've decided it definitely is bullying.
Right.
And it's not your practice that the target has to relocate?
That is not the practice of the suggestion. You know, if someone has to be held accountable for something that they did, we're not gonna ask the target to be the one to make the change.
What if it was seven kids at the high school, we're gonna have, it's gonna be a lot easier to change the target than it is seven kids.
Well, not necessarily, because like, you know, the schedules are so different, you know, all these kids aren't likely in classes together and things like that. Like, if we need to change classes, you know, we think that's a safety issue, you know, for, you know, a kid to feel safe in school because of something egregious that happened, then we would ask the person, the aggressor, that would be the practice. Am I right on that?
I have a couple of questions about the plan. Yep, yep, on page 10, it talks in here about supervision in bathrooms. Can you tell me what kind of supervision in bathrooms we have K through 12?
I'm sorry, could you say that one more time, Emily?
Page 10. I mean, it seems like it's a lot to ask for.
Are you talking about like the unstructured?
I'm talking about under general teaching approaches and support bullying B, and about the fourth bullet, setting and communicating district and school standards for adult supervision during lunch, recess, bathroom, and other unstructured time. How do we supervise bathrooms?
It depends on the level, I mean, I think Ms. Mitchell could tell you a lot about how she's been supervising bathrooms lately. So sometimes when we need to, the principal or the assistant principal does supervise the bathrooms. Sometimes, you know, at the high school level, it is a duty, you know, things like that, security. At the elementary level, it's usually the teachers, you know, the teachers take the kids.
This would be more like during lunch and recess and stuff, it wouldn't be like if a student's going to the bathroom during the day.
Right, I think they're talking about the unstructured times where kids are more at risk of experiencing, you know, you know, being targeted.
Okay.
Yeah.
And on the same page, two more bullets down, it says peer mediation. I love peer mediation, but peer mediation is a structured, it's gotta be taught.
Yeah.
So are we doing that at this point in time, and do we, we did it years and years ago?
Yeah.
And it was a heavy lift?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't really instituted that. I think, you know, what we're, we're doing more is like when we're having community circles, that's like a lot, a good peer intervention for, maybe not a bullying incident, but like, kind of resolve something that's going on in the class that's like not really acceptable.
So I would just change that from peer mediation to something that's more.
Yeah.
Because peer mediation, though it's a great program, it's not, it's not really easy. And my last thing, I think you answered my question, yes, that was about who the designee was, the designee, and who was gonna make the determination. So that was my big concern, was the determination. And again, I'd like to see the incidents at some point in time. We don't have to have a big thing like this, I'd just like to see the numbers again and see how it is. And I'm sure that things, things are gonna look way better now that we've had all the professional development, but let's talk conflict everywhere.
I understand.
Sounds great.
Any other comments or questions?
I did have one more.
Mr. Guttrow.
Mr. Brugoli not having.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
It's because I'm so short. No, you can take, I was up.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
He yields to you, Mr. Guttrow.
I remember my last question, it's because Courtney mentioned DOVE, which, thank you all for incorporating DOVE curriculum. When I was on the DOVE board, they talked about certain minority populations underreporting domestic violence, that. Does the same hold true on bullying or incidents among different, you know, minority populations? And have we noticed that? And are we making efforts to reach those parents to encourage reporting if, if an incident or bullying takes place?
I would say, I think one of the important pieces about today and talking to our staff is that usually a target is, like Mr. Gilbert had talked about, they're anxious, they're nervous, they don't want to report. And so it's really important that our teachers and staff have their eyes and ears open at all times to kind of be that voice for them, I think. Talking about like, different races, ethnicities, I don't know, I'm not really sure, I'd have to look at that. I don't, I don't believe that they're underrepresented by, at our school, but that could be something we look at, for sure.
I just didn't know if there are any cultural obstacles, you know, if, if DOVE is asserting that, you know, certain cultural minorities don't report domestic violence. Would they be reluctant as well to report an incident in the classroom? I, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I think, I think a lot of times, most kids are intimidated to do so.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if that answers that.
No, and I would also just add to, we have a large EL population in our school as well, and I would tell you that quite frankly, translation service is coming a long way, as much as it may seem like a small piece, but they have come so very far. From family liaisons that we may reach out to, to just simple, the translation line, as simple as that is, it's open lines of communication for me that previously didn't exist. So I hope that those things would bridge some of those gaps, but it's very possible that they are there.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Just add to that, like their peer relationships, too, for say, an EL student are very important, because sometimes students report for other students.
Thank you.
Mr. Brugoli.
Thank you, it was a great job, nice presentation. I think a lot of this is subterfuge interpretation by the children involved in terms of how they read what's happening to them. In terms of something said to them, how they interpret it, a look, a gesture. And I think because of that, it's very difficult to really get a handle on what is really conflict, what is really bullying. And I think we can talk about teachers also having to interpret whether or not something is, again, to bring it to the next level. Whether it's subjective or whether it's objective opinion of the teacher or the staff member, as to whether or not it goes to the level of bullying. So I think, I think we have to do some work in that area. You said in, that you're trying to make sure that the forms are filled out and filed, because there are times when they weren't. And how will we clean that up?
And so I think what's happened is that, you know, people use the term bullying a lot, and it's not, and on the face of it, it doesn't really look like bullying, so people haven't filed. It looked more like a conflict.
Right.
And so instead, we're not asking them to make that determination anymore. We're saying, if someone is telling you they're being bullied, file the report. So I think, you know, we have to just, have to, if someone is feeling like they're bullying, we have, we're obligated by regulation to file the report and do the investigation and make the determination then. So it's like you have to just suspect it, or someone has to say it to you, and we are mandated to file that report. We'd be out of compliance if we didn't.
Okay, so it's not subjective?
It's not, it's not, I mean, the investigation, you, you have to make a determination based on, you know, all the information that you gather. But for the teacher, they just have to suspect it, or someone has to tell them that, and they're obligated to file the report.
And just lastly, just a tool I used to use 50 years ago when I first started teaching was, at the end of the day, I used to bring all the kids in a circle. I think they stole my idea. And what we used to talk about, what was good about the day and what was not, not so good about the day. And that helped them reflect as to what happened during the day to them. And when a kid goes home and the kid says, the parent says, so what did you do in school today? Nothing. There are times I heard that from my kids, nothing. Well, I know they did something, but at the end of the day, if you, if you do something like that, it gives them something that is recent, that they can bring home and, and share with their parents. And then also, we ended up with, what do we need to work on? What can we do better tomorrow to make what we did today better? And it really, it really brought the kids together as a group. And I saw a lot less conflict when I, when I used that model, so. Just to.
Collaborative problem solving.
What's it called now?
Collaborative problem solving.
I like that.
Community circle.
Mrs. Cahill.
I'm not gonna ask too many questions, I'm probably not gonna ask any, only because everyone kind of asks questions. But amazing amount of work, and I think from my perspective, I'd like to see the results once you go live. Well, I think you're already going live, right, but once it's really cemented. And I think what's important when we do plans like this, and any policies and things that we do, you have one concise plan to implement through the whole system. So that we can really like flush everything out and see how things work and things like that. But I'd be, I'm looking forward to see how things go by the end of the year, and once you really get things going, so. But thank you, because I know that's, this is an amazing amount of work that you had to put together, so.
Thanks.
Thank you, it's been a long day for all of you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Not you, Erin.
Item B, overview of the new Mental Health Act, Assistant Superintendent Perkins.
All right, thank you very much for having me here to update you on this, it's a, it's a very fun topic. So it's a, it's a new regulation, a new law that I have the pleasure of reviewing with you tonight. So it is called the Chapter 177 of the Acts of 2022, an act addressing barriers to care for mental health. And so I'm just gonna go through this really quickly, and I know that Ms. Owens provided you with this ahead of time, so, you know, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, but, and answer any questions. So this was signed into law by Governor Baker on August 10th. It has basically three areas that impact schools. One is much more significant than the others, and so it impacts student discipline, and that impact is significant. It impacts special education services, that one is not so much, so it's a potential. And emergency response plans, and again, that is not really a major impact on our emergency response plans. But the bill went into effect on November 8th, 2022. So in terms of discipline, the impact on this regulation is significant. And it basically says, this new regulation, which I do want to preface this by saying that the regulations have not even been released, this is law right now, so it is a law. So we do have to follow it, it went into effect on November 8th, and we have to implement it. We are still, we've been given draft guidance by the Department of Education, which we have shared with the principals, and we have met with the principals on this. And we have certainly been consulting with our attorneys throughout this whole process. But we do not actually have the actual guidance yet or the updated regulations. And so the, what this law says is that before principals or their designees can suspend a student under Massachusetts general law, Chapter 71, Section 37H and 3/4. And just to clarify, 37H and 3/4 is basically the big bucket that most disciplinary offenses fall under. So it could be vaping in a bathroom, it could be fighting, it could be graffiti. So it's, it's really a huge bucket that the majority of our disciplinary offenses fall under, including emergency removals, and that's when a student poses a significant safety risk in the school. The principal or designee must consider ways to reengage the student in the learning process, and shall not suspend the student until alternative remedies have been employed and their use and results documented. So alternative remedies may include things like mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, or as Mr. Brugoli just talked about, collaborative problem solving. And so where this does not apply, it does not apply to suspensions or expulsions that fall under 37H, which is dangerous weapons, drugs, or assault on staff. Those are the, the areas that are covered under 37H, or felony charges, which falls under 37H and 1/2. So those are the two areas that it, that doesn't apply. But anything else that would be considered to fall under what we would call 37H and 3/4, this applies to. So just a little bit about what I know so far, or we know so far about this new law, is that principals or designees must document and use, use the results of alternative remedies. They do, the principals need to keep written records of the alternative methods that they've used and the results of those alternative methods. This written record is mandated by law. Principals or designees can bypass using alternative methods only in the following situations. If the alternatives are unsuitable or counterproductive, and the principal has to have documented evidence of why that is so. In cases where the student's continued presence in school would pose a specific, documentable concern about the infliction of serious bodily injury or other serious harm upon another person while in school. So if the disciplinary situation does not fit into one of the two above categories, then a principal or designee cannot suspend, including emergency removal of student, until the principal attempts the alternative remedies. In an instance where a situation does fit into these exceptions, the principal or designee needs to keep a written record of why the alternative remedies are unsuitable or counterproductive. Or why the student's continued presence in school would pose a concern about the infliction of serious bodily injury or other serious harm. And so that in a nutshell is the disciplinary piece of this regulation, and obviously I'll, I'll finish the other two parts, which really are not significant, and then answer any questions. So the other thing that this law does is it creates what's called interagency review teams. An interagency review team is, is a group of people that meets to collaborate on complex cases. And so what that means is basically, it has to be a student under the age of 22 that is disabled or has a complex behavioral health or special needs. And qualifies or may qualify for services from one or more state agencies or special education services through the individual school district. And just to give you an understanding of what a complex case is, a complex case is where there is no current agreement about current service needs or placement. And it could be from, between multiple agencies, not just the school system. It could be from the Department of Mental Health, it could be from Department of Children and Families, not necessarily just the school system. And the individual is waiting in a hospital, emergency department, or at a home for a placement. So this team is comprised of all of the people listed on this, this screen. The chairs of the team are the Secretary of Health and Human Services and the Commissioner of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so I'm not gonna read everyone that's on there, you can read it, but at the bottom, you'll see that also included is a representative from the school district or districts responsible for any aspect of an individual's education. So how you get referred to this team, the individual themselves can refer themselves to this team if they're 16 or older, they can be referred by a state agency, they can be referred by the court, a hospital, emergency service provider. The school district can refer an attorney, a parent or guardian, or a physician, or a behavioral health care provider, if they've been given permission by the parent. So how these teams work, within five business days after the referral, the team will have to convene, and that will be convened by the commissioner or the secretary, as I mentioned before, the co-chairs. If the student is waiting in an emergency department, there is an emergency process. Once they receive the referral, they, the team would convene within one business days, one business day after receiving the referral. So the, the purpose of the team is to determine if additional services are needed to meet the current needs of the student, and who's going to pay for those services. The team may order expedited eligibility determinations, and this is where I believe that it could impact us. That they also can order an extended evaluation at a special education residential school. So the team will complete its review within 30 business days, except for the emergency circumstances I talked about above. And in that case, it should, complete its review within five days. There is a, a set of funds that have been set aside called the Liability Management and Reduction Fund to pay for the services that the team authorizes, if the team cannot come to a resolution regarding who should pay. So individuals can appeal the team's determination to the Division of Administrative Law Appeals. And so that is, in a nutshell, the interagency teams. And again, where I think that this could impact us is that if we have a student and we're fighting with the Department of Mental Health, or we're arguing with the Department of Children and Families, or, you know, any of the agents, multiple agencies that we deal with. And the student, and we're trying to decide who's going to provide services for this student, where I think it could impact us is that this agency could potentially order an extended evaluation, and I would. And I would assume that the district would be responsible for the payment of that. So next is, the other piece that it impacts is the updating of emergency plans. So we have emergency plans currently on file at the Department of Education. We update them every three years. There really is not a significant change to this other than, you know, that we have to include the idea of behavioral health crisis supports within our current plan. So we already have all of this documented for medical concerns. You know, so you'll see in the first bullet that it talks about a mobile behavioral health crisis response services need to be part of it. We already have the idea of a rapid communication system, how quickly, you know, EMS responds to a school. We have, we have all that. We are on campus, how the, how the equipment is going to get into the school. All of those things already documented in our plans. The difference is that it, our plans typically deal with medical providers, not behavioral crisis response providers. So that would be where we would need to update that. And then the other piece that I, I have not seen any guidance on this. So I'm not sure how that this is going to impact us, or what, what will be the responsibility here. But it, it talks about protocols, and the second bullet, protocols for informing parents and guardians and reporting to the department. I assume that's the Department of Education, when police, emergency medical technicians, or other non-behavioral health personnel are contacted to respond to a behavioral health crisis. We do not currently report, like when we call an ambulance, if there's a student or staff that has a medical emergency, we do not currently report that to the Department of Education. We do keep track of it. It is entered into our SNAP program. And the, we have a form that the nurses fill out anytime 911 is called. So, and it does actually have, part of that is the reason why the, the ambulance was called. And it does talk about whether it's like a mental health issue or a behavioral health crisis. And so that, we are, we already as a district document that. So it's just a matter of how they're going to collect that information. How are we supposed to provide that to the, to the department? But everything else, safety precautions to prevent injuries in classrooms, the CPR training, all of those things we already currently have within our plan. And the location of the AED devices, we already have that within our plan. In this, in this part, we do all of this already. When we develop plans, we work with the nurses, we work with the principals, we work with the athletic directors, local fire and police that we have great relationships with. And so we'll continue to do that as we update these plans. We already submit it to the department every three years. This new plan will be expected to be submitted to the Department of Education sometime in September. What I did read was that it does need to be presented to school committee. So, you know, we'll, we'll have to share those plans with you prior to our submission. Although I will tell you that the model plan from the Department of Ed will be out sometime next year. But we are supposed to submit our plans in September. So that's interesting. But so, as I said, we already talk about in our plans where the defibrillators are. And then finally, it just talks about the practices, the, doing the drills, which we already do at the beginning of the year, and we do it periodically throughout the year. So we already do all those things. So there really isn't much new in the emergency plans other than just making sure we incorporate how we respond to behavioral health crises. And that, in a very quick nutshell, is the new law.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Perkins. This is going to wind up being another dense, huge packet from the Department of Education. So it's, I, I understand what they're saying, but it's really asking an awful lot, I believe. So when they talk about complex behavioral health, and they talk about this thing in the emergency plan, they want to make sure you're not calling the police or EMS if you're having a complex behavioral health problem, but you call who?
I assume social mental health, maybe. I'm not, I'm not.
Social mental health come into the building?
Yeah.
Do they come to your building when you call them? Or does, you know, you usually have to send kids out for a crisis evaluation, don't you?
I do believe that they, we don't typically have the crisis team come into our buildings. But I'm not sure, Maury, do they have a mobile? I think they do, right?
They, they used to have.
Yeah.
They used to have a mobile.
Crisis team.
And we don't want to have them come into.
Mark, come up to the mic.
We don't like to have them come in to schools because if a child needs a psychiatric hospitalization, they'd have to leave by ambulance. And we don't want kids to leave by ambulance whenever possible. So we do send kids out. So that's why we prefer to have them have their privacy and have their evaluation. We have, like a guardian has to initiate that. We help facilitate it.
Right, right. But if you have a real true emergency in the building, you can't always call the parent and say, well, you can. I've done it. It doesn't always work. Take your student now to be evaluated.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, parents are very responsive.
Yeah. So what, what confuses me is this complex behavioral health now is, from what Ms. Hoobley and I heard at the MASC convention, is going to be required to be part of Child Find. So we're going to be responsible now for finding kids who have a complex medical health, complex behavioral health issue. And it's going, they're going to be treated similar to a student with a disability or a medical need and have.
I haven't heard that yet. I haven't received, I did get the, I did, our attorney very nicely sent me the draft regulations around the interagency teams. And that's not in there. So I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I don't know if, if that's what they're saying. Maybe that is.
That was what we heard. So, you know, and, you know, it's, it's asking an awful lot, I think, to do that. And the interagency teams, are they, I mean, really, they, do you know how many of these they're going to get? I mean, it's a big state. You know, do they, they're going to, the commissioner of.
Education.
I mean, those two people are going to go to all these meetings?
I'm, I'm assuming they'll probably pick a dozen.
I can't wait to see.
We hold department created for this.
They will have to be. It's a whole separate thing because you can't, these people can't be. I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot, especially now. We know what kind of behavioral issues our kids are having and mental health issues that kids are having. So I'm, I'm, thank you for this. I'm not any less confused than I was before, even though I appreciate your coming. But I am still concerned about, I understand the need, I really do understand, but they're asking the schools once again to do everything, everything, and to be everybody for everybody.
Yeah.
So, and it's a little worrisome that we're picking up that responsibility to me. But just my opinion.
Anyone else? I'm just concerned about the day-to-day discipline. You're tying the, this ties the hands of.
Yep.
Deans, the, the kid who won't turn over the cell phone, the kid who's writing in the bathroom. You just can't suspend. You've got to go through this list of things. And those kids are going to be in that school where, as you go through all this, it requires just so much more of the people who discipline in our buildings. It's, it's a tough road ahead.
Yeah. The principals are concerned too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. School nurse appointment. Susanna McDonald, Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. Yes, before you is the resume of Susanna J. McDonald. We're recommending that she be hired as a school resource nurse for us. It's one of our budgeted positions that is open. She is DZ licensed and comes highly recommended by our nurse coordinator, Andrea Huer, as well. The resume is before you, and if we could have a vote to approve. Ms. McDonald, that would be greatly appreciated.
A motion, Mr. Guttrow, seconded by Mrs. Cahill. We approve, Superintendent. We need a roll.
Motion.
On the motion, Mrs. Lebo.
Mr. Mulvey, she licensed both as a nurse and as a.
Yes.
Okay.
She is.
These people should put that on their resume.
Yep. She is DZ licensed as well.
Thank you very much.
There is an expiration date, though, I noticed.
That's for the RN license. Yeah, but she is DZ licensed.
Everybody's, everybody's license expires at some point. Easily renewed.
Superintendent.
Mr. Bagoli.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill.
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo.
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro.
Yes.
Mayor Koch.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see Mr. Malaney. Is he here? Because he's up.
That is for referral to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The Grand Booklet is, though, at your place, is for review.
Okay, for review, placed into the Subcommittee, so be it. Okay, item E, Subcommittee Meeting Access. Discussion and Vote on Continuing to Broadcast Livestream Meetings Via QA TV. Mr. Guttrow.
Yeah, this was one of the things that we instituted during COVID. And I think Mrs. Lebo and I were suggesting that this could be a COVID keeper. I think that there's a lot of folks that have really come to rely on watching Subcommittee meetings. I, I don't know what the obstacle would be other than budgetarily, and I don't know what that would cost, but I am asking my colleagues to support it.
Okay, anybody else on the matter?
I'm not sure why we'd be voting on something that never went to Subcommittee.
Partly because Mr. Guttrow requested it happen before the next Subcommittee meeting. I decided to put it on the agenda.
But it doesn't follow protocol. And why should this be an exception?
Well, because it was something that, the request was made to make it prior to the next Subcommittee meeting. That, that was the reason I went out of protocol.
Well, I'd like to have some discussion on it in the Subcommittee.
Could I ask a question? So we had instituted it, and then there was a unilateral decision without the vote of this body to rescind it. So that's why if we're going to vote to rescind it, we can vote to rescind it as a body. We, we never took the vote to rescind it.
No, we didn't.
So, yeah.
So I agree. I think we should go back to doing it until we can discuss the whole thing at Subcommittee. But I think we should have rescinded it before we, when we did. And if you don't feel, feel like we should change it now.
I just think there are some questions that some committee members have.
And that's, that's, that's fine with me. I don't mind doing that. But we should go back to the way it was and not rescind it. And then have the discussion, and then come back and decide whether we're going to rescind it or, or keep it.
Right. I just, you know, just going on the line of transparency. I mean, we need, we need to find out what the cost is and.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. But I think before we change anything, we should just find out, we should go back to what we were doing, find out what you want to find out, have people be able to discuss it, and then make a decision. But until we do, we'll have open meetings. Or.
You mean video.
Video meetings.
There is a change. The change is budgetary. We used to have Brian Smith. He's no longer part of our group, so there is a cost.
So, but we can discuss that. Yeah, we can discuss that. And we can get feedback from our constituents about the, the cost benefits. Because I've heard from people who don't even have kids in the school yet that said, I really miss that school committee meeting. I'm so glad that we can see them, but what happened? So I, I just think it's, I think it's worth a discussion. And it's also about transparency.
Well, it's transparency is, you know, the, the door, the doors open every night. Come and sit here and sit, sit in a school committee meeting. Or you can get the minutes of the meeting online. That's, that's transparent.
The meetings of the minutes are dry, Paul. You don't get the feel for, you don't get, unless you are there when you're reading them, you don't really get the feel for everything that happened. It's a very dry report, objective report. Yes.
Can we just, which committee would we put this in so we can sit and discuss it, find out what the costs are, talk about all this in, in a meeting, and then take a vote once we have some information in front of us?
I have no idea.
Where will we put that, I want with that?
I would say policy, I would think.
It wouldn't be a change because we.
That's correct. The current policy, there's nothing about how meetings are administered in the policy book currently.
So would it be in order, basically, we wouldn't be casting a vote to do it. Someone would have to propose something on the agenda to rescind it, right? And then that would be discussed in Subcommittee.
That's the way I interpret.
Understood.
Oh. So we did things during the pandemic that we didn't have policy for. Lots of things we didn't have.
No, but we did, we did, we made the decision as a body.
We did.
Yeah.
Lots of things, but they weren't policy. But so that's why we're here.
Yeah, well, I, it, it matters not to me. I mean, it's going to be a full vote of the committee, whether we do it in policy or whether we do it in budget, or wherever you choose to do it, for whatever reason, it was fine by me.
It'd be budget. Look at the numbers. Some be responsible for, if that's, if that's a piece of contention, you know, we don't know how much it's going to cost. Could cost $1,000, could cost $10,000. We might want to see what it is so we can determine if that, those funds are used better for something else. You know, I'm not saying that that's the case or not the case, but we should have a discussion.
I think it has a budget, it certainly has a budget implication. But I think that the budget doesn't really create policy. So I don't, I don't, I don't know if we'd have to go to budget and then go to policy.
Does it have to go to policy? Can we just put it in the budget?
I don't believe that everything has to go to Subcommittee, first of all.
I don't either.
Before it's placed on our agenda. So, I mean, that's something we do, and it's a good thing that we do. But at this point, I put it on the agenda for a vote because there's a Subcommittee. There's a few Subcommittee meetings coming up. So I would, the chair would be open to a motion to do it and then create a vote.
So, so the question, Mr. Chairman, is, are we leaving it as is unless someone introduces something to rescind it? If that's the case, then I'll withdraw this from the agenda. But as, as long as we're maintaining what we did over the course of the pandemic, until we deliberate, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
So someone would have to come forward to you and put something on the agenda, which we refer to Subcommittee to potentially rescind.
Correct.
Okay.
You all set?
I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay, Kids Voting USA. Item F, For Referral for Teaching and Learning Subcommittee. Mr. Guttrow, any comment?
Yeah, well, this was just, somebody inquired, I remember, the first year that I ran. There was Kids Vote. I can't remember if it was just in one school, in multiple schools, citywide. So the question was just to determine the cost, logistics, how burdensome it would be to reinstitute it. So we could talk about that in Subcommittee. I, I don't know if there's a, Mrs. Crispo, you know, if it's just a matter of ballots or how it's administered, it could be onerous, it could be expensive, I'm not quite sure. But at least to have the discussion to figure out what's involved.
On the motion, is that a motion?
Not yet. No, it's just going to Subcommittee, unless you object.
No. Can I, can I say something about it or not till I get to the Subcommittee meeting?
That's Mr. Bagoli.
Yes.
I would like to find out, and I hate to ask this of Laura, if we can just get a synopsis of where it happened before. I think it was in one grade, and it was mainly primary, the Presidential was elementary. It made mainly the Presidential.
It hasn't been done since 2007. I did figure out that.
Okay.
And I believe it was done at the elementary schools, from what I can tell.
Just for the Presidential.
Just for the Presidential election, from what I can tell from the school committee meetings, because it was reported at school committee.
Right, and I, I believe that's true.
I think it was more extensive than that, way back when a Herald rally was actually the one that.
We could ask Harold. We could ask Harold.
It may have dwindled by the time, by the last reporting I found, yeah.
Yeah. Great to hear, hear from Harold.
It's a, it's a national organization. I did do some research. It's a national organization. It's not very popular in Massachusetts. There's only two, two towns doing it currently. But we can.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work.
Yeah. It's, it's online now, though.
But it almost seems like in the seventh grade, the eighth grade, it wouldn't be a lot of work because there's a civics course in the eighth grade.
Right.
And so it could be part of the curriculum there, especially if it's online, too. And it would be more appropriate there, I think, than in the elementary grades, but.
And I, I will disclose, in 2001, there was a Kids Vote, which I lost, and Mr. Malaney won.
You're trying to make up for that in the school.
Am I right, Jim? There's Jim, now we see him, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional business before the committee?
Just an out-of-state travel.
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry. Motion to approve the out-of-state travel for North Quincy High School. On a motion of Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Hubley, we approve. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Any additional business before the committee? Seeing none, communications up?
I have a communication.
Yes, communications, Mrs. Hubley.
I was watching the wonderful new Quincy High School show